Bring back more information on or proposals for. And we're here to take input both from you, the commission, from any staff members who are here, as well as from the public who are here. We do have a presentation we're going to run through, and we very much like to beg your, um, oh, understanding and maybe hold your questions until we've reached the end of the presentation. That's why we provided you with these lovely pages which lay out the entire presentation and give you space to write down your voluminous questions and notes that you will have as we go along. But we think that if you allow us to sort of get through the material once, then we can have a more substantive and clear discussion at the end, if that makes sense. Is that okay with you guys?
Yep.
Nobody objects? Okay. All right, great. So I'm just going to briefly give a little bit of background on the part of this presentation that's not really on a slide. And that has to do with sort of why we're here in the first place, what puts us in this situation. And we did present at our last regular meeting, our report on the reduction in service hours, and there was an overview section in that packet. And that overview is based, I just want to touch briefly on why it is that library service hours were reduced in the first place. And the background says that reductions came as the library commission faced a third year of budget deficits in 2011, 2012. And we had already taken other cost-saving measures. There was a retirement incentive program in 2009 with nine retirements, of which 5.95 FTE are still vacant and unfunded. There were furlough days that the staff took as a hit in 2009, 2010, and 2011. And we saw a couple of very significant reductions in income. One of those was from state funds, which went away pretty much completely. Previously, we'd received about $650,000 a year in various state monies, transaction-based reimbursements, and the Public Library Foundation, and those went away. And then property taxes also took a severe dive. In '08, '09, we had a property taxes of $14,595, and in, that's millions, and in '10, '11, $13,944. So the combined hit between those two large reductions was well over $1 million in loss of revenues. So the reduction in service hours was implemented in July of 2011 as a direct result of these losses of revenue, and saved the library from having to lay anybody off or take other measures that we might have. The materials budget has been more or less maintained through that time. And here we find ourselves at a 40-hour week for most branches, 44 for Central. And there's more background in that previous report, but you're all pretty familiar with that. So I'm going to hand it over.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll start with, we'll just run through kind of the major categories of the presentation. First, it's a new financial analysis. We started over. And we have two unrelated items that we have priced out. One is the sustainable, we're calling sustainable staffing for the current operations. That's really to provide adequate staffing for backfilling when there's vacations and sick leave time. Right now, it's not really, it's not adequate staff for it, and it causes a lot of operational problems. The second one, the extended operating hours, is the pricing out of opening on Monday for eight hours and adding two additional hours in Saturday. They, I think, as we go through this, you'll see that we've created a distinct separation between these two items. One, just dealing with the current operations, and then consideration for extending the hours that the library system is open. We'll talk about the categories of expense that I priced out, the salaries, benefits, et cetera. There are assumption pages. So I provided a summary of the assumptions that were made when pricing out these two items. Then there's result pages. There's response to questions after that, and there'll be a summary as well. Okay, moving on to Slide 3.
Okay, I'm going to talk about the process that we used to come up with these figures. So as mentioned, we basically did start over from scratch, realizing that numbers have been provided to the commission in the past. The service hours report from October of 2012 had some cost analysis figures in it, and later the JPA review committee asked for additional numbers and clarification of figures for restoring the hours. And so various sets of numbers have come out. And we didn't just want to look at those numbers and adjust them as we saw fit. We wanted to start over. So we decided it would be best to talk to the staff, and we invited feedback from all of the branch managers. And we had a meeting about two weeks ago with each of the branch managers, as well as the supervising circulation techs at the three largest libraries. And we also invited input from the entire staff through email and through an online website. So we tried to be as inclusive as possible in involving the frontline staff and the people that would know best what it would take to restore the hours at their libraries. So we took a fresh look at all of the prior reports, kind of setting them aside and looking at everything from scratch. And what we learned from that experience were a few new options. And if you could take a look at one of the handouts you have there called Summary of Special Branch Managers Meeting. So as I said, this was a meeting held on November 1st, a couple weeks ago, and it involved all 11 branch managers, as well as the circ supervisors, the librarian here at Central who's responsible for scheduling, the Central Reference Desk, as well as several of us on the management team. And one of the first things we talked about is the staffing that would be required to restore those eight hours on Monday and two additional hours on Saturday. And we will come back to that a little bit later in the presentation. Section 3 on your summary handout talks about the need for additional extra help monies and additional extra help, period. So we've been hearing this request from the libraries for a number of months, that they're understaffed, that they don't have enough extra help to staff the libraries when there are absences, that their short-term extra help budget is insufficient, and so forth. So what we wanted to do at this meeting, what we did do, was we kind of went around and asked each branch manager, when you have an absence in each of the following classifications, how much of the time do you need to backfill for that absence? So for example, if a librarian calls in sick today, they're not going to be here for their eight-hour shift. Does that mean you need an eight-hour extra-help librarian to fill in? Or can you get by with a six-hour shift of a librarian, or a four-hour shift? And so we came out of that discussion with some good data. And what this sheet is explaining is, after we went around and had each branch manager answer that question for each classification, we took all of those figures and averaged them out. And so for a branch manager absence or any librarian absence, so that would be a librarian 1, 2, or 3, they said that most of the time, they would approximately need to backfill 40% of a librarian absence. Then for a tech 3, which would be your circulation staff, they said 75%. We need to have at least 3/4 of a backfill with a sub for a tech 3 absence. And then the tech 2s, they said, on average, 60% backfill. So that was really good information to learn from that meeting, and we were able to take that and extrapolate some figures from it, which will be shared with you a little bit later in this presentation. And then Section 4 on this summary sheet, I'd like to go over, it talks about some of the ideas that we brainstormed around in that meeting. So we went into that meeting with a couple of questions, and we didn't have a set agenda. We did a traditional brainstorming session where we invited all ideas, and we were not evaluating those ideas at that time. We were just gathering them. And so we did, you know, large flip charts where we came up with pages upon pages of great ideas, and I didn't include all of those ideas here, but what emerged were some of the themes that I'd like to touch on. The biggest one was probably the fact that we do not have enough staff for the current operating schedule. And over and over again, we heard about how more staff is needed, not just extra-help staff, but staff in general. Another theme that emerged was, we need to increase the library's funding. This is not a surprise. We talked strategically about if we were to increase the library funding through a parcel tax or some other measure, shouldn't we think strategically about what changes we might want to make now with the hours, or what changes we might want to hold off on to basically hold off until we put forth a tax incentive so that we could campaign on those needs? Another theme was the need for a greater sub-budget, which has already been mentioned tonight. They felt very strongly that we needed to get staff buy-in and public buy-in before making any changes, no matter how small, even if it was a change to our existing 40-hour schedule, much less expanding the hours. They wanted there to be full and complete staff input and buy-in, and of course, input from the public. And another theme that emerged was being efficient with the resources and the staffing that we have right now. So those were some of the emerging options that came out of that meeting. And then we will loop back around a little bit later in the presentation to talk about the resources they identified as being needed for the extended hours.
Okay, thank you. Once that process was completed, and we came up with, you know, the basic needs, I started to pull things together, starting putting numbers to spreadsheets, et cetera, and validating the detailed data. So we spent quite a bit of time asking questions, talking with Patrick about benefit costs, looping back with David and Jamie about questions about the number of full-time equivalents that are being provided as what's needed to accomplish these two items that are being talked about this evening, till I think they just got tired of talking to me. And I think that happened about sometime this morning.
That's good.
And so I did spend a lot of time just asking questions about validating the detail once it was provided to me. So let's talk a little bit about the categories of expense. So for salaries, you have full-time employees, and I think everybody understands what full-time employees are, they have benefit packages, et cetera. Part-time, you also have part-time employees with benefits. So that becomes a cost factor, as well as if you're going to hire a full-time person with benefits. You have extra-help category of employees. They do not have benefits, but they do have costs associated with them. And we'll talk a little bit about them and maybe just get that out of the way. It's things like Medicare, workers' comp, LTD. There are some basic things that everybody gets to pay when you have employees, whether they have a health package or anything like that. The benefit costs, I priced out, and we worked going through what benefits apply to what category of employees. You have a health package, you have dental, you have vision, there's CalPERS in terms of your retirement, workers' comp, LTD. Another one that sometimes isn't thought of as much as a health benefit or something associated with costing out additional labor time is your sick and vacation accruals. Employees that accrue sick and vacation, that's a cost to the library. When they take that off, and a lot of times that causes someone else to earn more time or to have to backfill, but it is definitely an additional cost on your benefit package. And then operating costs, we went out and took a look at some of the basic, kind of the big-dollar items or large-ticket items, and it's not all that much of an impact, but we did take a look at it. Things like the water bill, PG&E, electric, those types. And we tried to calculate by looking at some past bills, what would be a reasonable assumption for adding another day to the library's being open? So the first one is assumptions for sustainable staffing, which is the backfilling of vacation and sick-time absences. As Jamie mentioned, what surfaced out, well, actually, the 80%, the backfilling of vacation and sick-time absences would be, it's felt from management, that 80% of the extra-help, 80% of that time would be, we would use extra-help personnel. And 20% would be permanent part-time people would fill those, that need. We made the assumption that everybody would be using about 160 hours of sick and/or vacation time usage during the year. And then, as Jamie mentioned, the percentages come from the meeting and the meetings on what it would take to backfill. And so some of the positions would be 40, some would be 75, or in between 40 and 75, I think it's 40, 60, and 75. That becomes part of the calculation in determining, you know, the number of hours needed. They're priced out at the current rate of pay. The extra-help, it's assumed that they will not exceed, and you have 960 and 1,000. The reason it's 960 or 1,000 hours is, if you have a PERS retiree working, they can't work more than 960 hours. If you have a part-time employee, they cannot work more than 1,000 hours before they become covered by PERS. The significance of this is, once a person is covered by PERS, there's this basic rule, once a member, always a member. So you work somebody, and it can be 1,000 in one hour. They become a PERS member, and they maintain that status for the rest of their part-time working career with the library. It's a significant increase in the cost. So the assumption is that, you know, the library does not allow anyone to, a part-timer, to break that threshold. And there are internal controls in place to monitor that, to assist in making sure that that doesn't happen. There's no costing for the additional recruitment and training. There's no costing out for the indirect cost. So to implement a backfill program, there's a total additional hours of about 8,138 hours that would be needed. That's about 3.91 FTEs. The significant thing here is, and I actually asked this question to get educated here, is 3.91 FTEs, you're saying that the library is on its knees over four people? It's not the four, the FTEs. It's, this represents about 20 part-time people. To be able to have a pool of people available on a pretty fast turnaround, somebody calls in sick, you need somebody, hopefully, within a couple of hours. So that's the significance when you look at 3.91. Don't, you know, you don't want to be a little misled by that number. It's a much larger effort in terms of backfilling vacations and sick leave, and managing an additional 20 or plus people into the work pool. It's no minor task. So down to the costs. So I broke this out. The assumption, by having 80 hours for each vacation or sick, you know, makes the number come out the same for either vacation time or sick time. It, you know, in reality, it would be a little bit different. You'd either have some more sick leave and less vacation, or more vacation and less sick leave. But the assumption was that you had 80 hours of each time of pay, which is, you know, it's two weeks. So there's 99, 710, or 199,000 for the salary, and the benefit cost is approximately 103,700. You have a total of 303,000. It's not anticipated, or it, there, it's, I guess it's anticipated, there would be no overtime incurred in this effort. By having the extra pool of people, if somebody was close to their 40 hours in the week, you know, you would have to call someone else to backfill. So with this slide, Jamie will talk a little bit about the assumptions on the extended operating hours.
Okay, so we're moving away now from discussing the resources needed for our current set of hours, and shifting gears to looking at what it would take to extend or restore our hours. And with this, we're talking about the eight hours on Monday and the two hours on Saturdays. So we would close at 6:00 PM instead of 4:00 PM on Saturdays. So on one of your handouts, there's a chart, and it's entitled Additional Staff Needed to Reopen for Eight Hours on Monday and Two More Hours on Saturday. So if you could get that in front of you. This chart is a direct result of that meeting that we held with the branch managers on November 1st, and it's broken down by branch along the left-hand side, and then by classification. And we basically asked each branch manager the question, what would it take, staffing-wise, for you to be able to reopen for these additional hours? And one thing to note is, there are some scheduling challenges associated with moving from a 40-hour work week to anything more than a 40-hour work week, because most people work 40 hours. So in moving to add 10 more hours, the eight on Monday and two on Saturday, we're talking about going from a 40-hour schedule to a 50-hour schedule at each library. And another thing to keep in mind is that we cannot create a new FTE that's less than 20 hours a week, or less than half-time, per our MOU. So we have committed and promised to only creating new part-time positions that are at least 20 hours a week. So with this chart, let's look for an example branch. We'll take Sebastopol. Sebastopol said, in order to restore the hours, they would need 13 more hours of a tech 2, 20 more hours of a tech 3, eight more hours of a librarian, too. And each branch is different, and there are some notes here associated with the situation that's going on at each branch. What a lot of the branches had in mind was an additional part-timer who could work on Mondays and Saturdays, basically, to cover those additional hours. Some branches already have part-time staff who may be interested and willing to pick up additional hours. So for example, Northwest, that said they needed four more hours of a tech 2. I don't know this, but I'm speculating that they possibly have a part-time tech 2 already there who could just add four more hours to their schedule. Whereas the 16 hours that they're asking for of a tech 3 is probably going to be a new hire, a new employee. And again, we can't hire somebody at 16 hours, it would have to be 20 or more. So our approach with that would probably be to try and combine a 16-hour-a-week shift with some other shift that's being requested on this chart, probably at another location. So we would see the recruitments happening, in some cases, as a pair of hours across two locations. I'd also like to point out Central on this chart. Central requested 48 additional hours per week of a library associate. And they don't feel that they need any additional staff at the circulation desk, in the central sorting department, or with reference aides. The central circulation department felt that they could accommodate the additional hours with the staff that they have now, so long as they have an increased extra-help budget. And they also felt that if they had that increased extra-help budget, they could take Sundays back as part of their permanent staffing. In other words, right now, Sundays are staffed on a volunteer basis by employees who are not necessarily regularly scheduled to work at Central. not necessarily regularly scheduled to work at Central. It didn't used to be that way. It used to be that Sundays was staffed by the central library staff, and they're saying that they can return to that model. So down at the bottom, you get the totals by classification, and then the grand total, not grant total, grand total is four hundred and eleven hours, or ten point two eight additional FTE, if you add it all up. And just going back for a moment to the summary minutes of the special branch managers meeting, the very last section on this page, just want to draw your attention to, there's a list there of some of the specific brainstorming suggestions that came out of that meeting in terms of restoring the hours. And we were specifically asked by the commission to look at restoring the eight hours on Monday and two hours on Saturday, and the cost for that, so that's what we did bring tonight. But these are some of the other ideas that staff had. One of them was to keep the hours as they are for most of the libraries, but expand the hours for branches that are on the one-on-one corridor, so that throughout the county you have some libraries that are open, additional hours than they are now. There was concern around the eight PM closure, and that that has essentially killed the usage of the libraries in the evening hours. Some libraries are reporting that very few people are coming in between seven and eight PM, and our theory around that is that by the time families get home and have dinner and so forth, they're up against seven o'clock or so, and they're just choosing to not bother to come into the library, because they know we're about to close. So the suggestion was for us to consider staying open until nine o'clock, as we used to do. Another suggestion was to consider if the public will actually come in on Mondays. And this may sound odd, a lot of feedback has come to us about restoring the hours on Mondays, but some of the libraries are feeling like, if they were to reopen on Mondays, they may not have a whole lot of public coming in, depending on the branch. Another suggestion was to rotate Monday and Friday in some sort of staggered fashion. So regionally, throughout the county, we would have some library open every Monday, and some others open every Friday. One concern was that the branches be able to keep a consistent schedule, so that, for example, the Hillsburg branch would have the same schedule from week to week, and wouldn't change. Week one, it would be one schedule, week two, it would be a different schedule, and so forth, because we have had some suggestions along those lines. And the staff felt like each individual branch should keep a consistent schedule, so it would be clear to the public. Opening for four hours on Monday was suggested, and four hours on Saturday. Again, this would be one idea around our existing schedule, and just changing the hours of our existing forty-hour schedule. Opening four hours on Monday and four hours on Friday was also suggested, so some half-days. And finally, opening at noon on Tuesday, or any other day of your choice, opening at noon, and staying open until six on Saturday.
Some of the assumptions, in addition to what Jeremy, or Jamie, just reviewed, there is some savings on the book drop on Mondays. Currently now, we have a person going around, making sure that the book drop doesn't get full and clogged up, et cetera. We wouldn't need that person to do that anymore if we were open on Mondays. No costing for recruitment and training again, and no costing for the indirect costs. And there's no costing for backfilling on opening Mondays, it would be a pretty minor amount if we rolled that in. And as Jamie had explained, going to fifty hours, that's not a standard schedule. So that is, you know, a complexity in terms of scheduling that, having people being supervised, that they would work sixteen hours at one location, and another set amount of hours at another location, and when, and where, those kinds of things, as opposed to somebody just shows up every day from eight to five. So for opening Monday for eight hours, and two hours on Saturday, you have a total additional hours of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-two, or ten point two eight FTEs. There's a total additional salary of about four hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred, and total additional benefits of three oh eight, and some operating costs, giving you a total of about eight hundred and eleven thousand. All the hours on this effort are going to earn benefits. They're all, would be benefited employees that would fill this need. Now, I felt that I would be somewhat remiss if I just stopped here and said, okay, that's it, here, here are the costs, you know, we can start discussing it, asking questions, et cetera. Knowing that there are other big-ticket items out there for the, for the library that may have some funding sources, may not, but at this point, it definitely, I think, as we move towards the budget, preparing the budget and the budget cycle, these items would start getting some discussion time. And I didn't want to have a situation where the commission, you know, two months from now, would say, well, jeez, Bruce, you knew about all these, why didn't you say something a couple of months ago? You know, this would have been interesting information back then. So if it's not interesting information now, you can discard it, and we can move on. If it is, good. So your retiree health plan, your current, you're currently on a pay-as-you-go, what they call a pay-as-you-go. You pay the amount of the bills that come in every month. That's way below the future cost, potential cost, of the plan. Also, in the last budget, you made a provision to put five hundred thousand dollars aside to help start funding toward this future cost that someday will be upon the library. If you had a desire to move to what's called the annual OPEB cost, you would need, in addition to the five hundred thousand, and in addition to the pay-as-you-go, you would need another two hundred and twenty-eight thousand to put in to a trust account, to fund these, the benefits, the cost of the benefits that are accruing now, that will become, become a reality sometime in the future. Now, we have a actuarial report, studies this every two years. And we're currently working on going out with another RFP, or to perform an actuarial report for the upcoming fiscal year audit, and to maintain your requirement of every two years to have one performed. I expect that the cost on this new one should go down somewhat. And that's just one provision in the new contract, is that when employees hit Medicare age, when they qualify Medicare, you know, they drop off of the retiree health plan. So when that is taken into consideration in the upcoming actuarial report, I would expect that there would be some benefit realized there in the, in the result of the number. But still, there'll be a significant unfunded liability hanging out there regardless. Calpers, Calpers has spent quite a bit of time letting agencies know that they're changing some of their assumptions, and as a result, the cost of programs, plans are going to go up. We're anticipating that the, the next year's rate will go up about a half a percent, about a half a percent. But they also are saying that there'll be another year of increases after that. The primary, I think, issue with Calpers is the mortality rate. People are living longer, and they weren't very proactive at realizing that. Every five years, they'd look at it and say, oh, people are living longer, and they'd raise a little bit, while they, they now realize that it's very significant on the cost of a retirement plan, especially a defined benefit plan, where as long as a person's alive, you're going to be paying benefit, and the spouse as well, or, you know, and fishery. Capital replacement plan. You have no capital replacement plan. I took a quick look at your assets, your fixed asset register, and the depreciated value of your assets currently is about fifty percent of the cost. You know, said another way, about half of your assets are worn out. And there's no provision for replacing them. Now, there, this is one of those issue items, you could go on pay-as-you-go, places do, places do a replacement fund. The thing about pay-as-you-go is, when the big-ticket item comes due, you get to write a big check, a big check. And so you get this situation where you go along and you have fifty or sixty thousand dollars, and then all of a sudden, oh, in this year's budget, we've got to make a provision for, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand. And I think it works a lot better if you try to even out, smooth out that line by making a, an annual contribution such that you'll have some money there when the big-ticket item comes, you can cover it. Maintaining reserves. The commission does have a stabilization fund. It's right now, it's at twelve and a half percent. The policy, you know, does call out that the goal is twenty. If you were to work towards achieving that goal of twenty percent, it would take another, you know, million one into the stabilization fund. And that, that would just be, you know, that's another one of those items, you get, you have the list, and setting priorities, and trying to solve for the, for the problem. And then the last item, in the, the cost of living increases will be about two hundred thousand dollars a year. And that, we know, at least for the next couple of years, that's going to be an additional load on the operating cost as time marches on. So I did a quick little summary there at the end, you know, annual amounts is, you know, almost a million one, a million ninety-nine thousand, and the one time is two point one million. So these items, you know, are in competition, so to speak, in terms of setting priorities for the library, budgetary considerations, those kind of good financial management issues, you know, you would want to be thinking about these items. And as well as, it's not that the, you know, the financial sky is falling, is there are some resources that we also could allocate toward solving some of these problems, it's just to, to surface that there's not just the dollar amount for opening on Monday, and backfilling, vacation and sick leave, that there is an awareness that we do have some other financial, big-ticket financial items that'll have to be considered down the road, once we start having discussions about solutions. You'll have your 2012, 13 financials will be presented on December 2nd. We're also working on the estimated financial results for 13, 14, in terms of just your budget to actual. I think just in a sweeping generalization, the, both the 2013 results, as we move forward on the estimated financial results, it'll at least be better, it'll be, it'll be better than what you've heard from your finance people over the last couple of years. So it's, you know, I'm not, I'm not calling for confetti to start dropping, but it, it, you know, it's not going to be, oh, we've got, you know, dark clouds on the horizon.
It was a low bar to rise.
Yeah.
Put it that way.
Yeah. In summary, we went, you know, we talked about the sustainable staffing, different set of assumptions, a different task that needs to be solved, or a different problem for the, the current operations of the library to be solved, the extended hours operation of operation. Again, assumptions that are different than your sustainable staffing, another item of great interest in the community. And both of them have a relatively large price tag associated with them. Your competing financial considerations. And then, I think, for staff, it's the next steps, with emphasis on the question mark. And with that, questions and discussion?
I have a question. When you did the annualized cost for Monday opening and two hours per Saturday, was that based on the new contract?
It's based on the new contract, well, it's based on the current salaries, and current, you know, 13, 14. So in the new contract, there's a one-time payment that is, that we make. When you get to 14, 15, then you're going to have a rate, an increase in salaries. Now, that's not built in to these numbers. Now, that's not built in to these numbers. You know, so as we, you know, as this evolves and we get more and more input about, you know, the interest level of one item versus another, if the commission desires to say, well, let's do a projection for next year, or let's have a couple of years' projection, see what it's going to do, you know, in a, just in a ballpark, you can take a percentage number and just add it to them. The real tough one is medical. You know, it's the health benefits.
I have a couple of questions on the, along those lines. So on the estimated cost here for the backfill vacation, there's the vacation time, the sick time, and then the benefit cost. So I just want to understand that benefit cost because I thought this is, the majority of this was extra help. I thought it was 80% extra help.
It is. But on the backfill, you know, the first, the first thing to, you know, keep in mind, there is about eight, eight percent or so associated with the extra help. Then on the 20%, you have some higher, you have quite a few of the benefit people that, you know, drives this up. Now, if you notice that the, the benefit cost, it's about 52%.
Right.
When you look at the opening on Mondays, it's around 63 or so.
So.
So it did get dragged down, but there still will be a lot of benefits associated.
So that brings in my second question, or, you know, as a strategy, as we think through this, is there any possibility to use extra help on the Monday opening and the Saturday? I mean, because obviously that benefit cost is huge. So is that a possibility? Or does our union contract?
I think I defer that.
Not allow it? I mean, if, you know, if we can carve out $300,000 by using extra help instead of benefit laden help.
We could, but would you want to permanently restore hours on a model that's based on non-permanent staff?
Well, maybe we need to think about our overall structure. I mean, I'm just, you know, as we explore ideas, like maybe you have half the people who work Monday through Friday and another half that work, you know, Tuesday through Saturday as their 40-hour week, so that everybody gets two days off in a row, but then extra help to fill in so that on any given day, there's a mix of extra help and not extra help. I mean, I'm just trying to see if there's a way to carve out some funds. Or if, based on MROU and other considerations, it's not a possibility and we need to figure out how to, you know, come up with a budget that is full, you know, covers full benefits.
I don't know if I can speak exactly to all the ins and outs of that model that you just mentioned, but just in general principle, I think it, we would have to replace X number of hours or add X number of hours of work. And as Jamie said, her question immediately sort of got to the heart of it for me, which is, we run a professional operation based on people who are highly skilled and trained. And when you start bringing on workforce, as has been done a lot in the community colleges and in the school libraries, of people who are really just sort of keeping the doors open, then you are degrading the quality of service that you're providing. And I think you lose your opportunity in the community to really say to them at any point, would you please now fund us so we can have an excellent library? I look at this strategically. This whole, what it would cost to open for additional hours, to open up again, even to get up to the 1970s levels in my starry-eyed view of 72 hours a week of being open, you want to present that as a vision with a price tag to the public who fund public institutions through the taxes that they pay. And if at any point in the future, we have any hope of passing a tax measure to support excellent library service in Sonoma County, I think we have to have these kind of hard numbers that say what it would cost to present quality library service. Not good enough library service or sort of average or almost average library service, but really excellent library service. And so that's, that's just sort of my place where I stand on this. And I think you might be able to wiggle around, I mean, you know, the community colleges, my wife works as an adjunct faculty member and gets paid a fraction of what a regular faculty person would make. And they hire a lot of those people. And basically, they've degraded their entire faculty status as librarians to the point where people are working for nothing. And yeah, it's desperate times and there will always be people to take that work, but you will not be offering the kind of service and the kind of librarianship that you need to, to the public. Long-winded, sorry.
No, I respect your view and understand the quality component. You know, then there's the balance of, I think we have, you know, the community members who are really, you know, in many cases, very, very interested in us figuring out a way to expand our hours. And so, you know, in, as we explore all the options, I think it's important for us to understand, you know, from a staffing model, since staffing is the hugest component, right, what are even the options? And then, I think you're right, then we need to talk about, if you go down one path versus another, what are the implications? What's the quality trade-off? What's the longevity, the commitment, you know, the skill level, knowledge, et cetera? But, you know, I can't help but look at, at a, you know, over $300,000 price tag and say, is there any opportunity to do something differently and, you know, and then, and what's the trade-off there? But I'm still not 100% clear if it's even a possibility, given our MOU and commitments there.
Well, just to be clear, the $300,000 price tag, that's primarily and vast majority extra hire, non-regular hire people. It's the restoration of hours figure, that's the 800,000-plus number that is exclusively regular hire.
Right. Yes, the 308 was simply the benefits cost for those folks. So strictly looking at the benefits cost.
Can I ask for some clarification before we go forward? The numbers we're looking at, so we were given two separate issues, the bringing, bringing us up to being fully staffed and then adding hours. My question is that the costs that we're looking at for adding hours, does that include the amounts needed to bring us up to being fully staffed and then add hours? Or is it with the assumption that we're already fully staffed? I guess the question is, do these numbers for opening on Monday and Saturday assume we're starting where we are today as understaffed? Or does it assume that we've already added in extra staff?
Okay, they're two separate numbers. So we absolutely do not recommend or mean to suggest that we would restore hours until we have adequately staffed for the hours we have now.
So these costs would be on top of?
Yes.
Adequately staffed.
Yes.
For where we are today. So it assumes we are?
One million one one four one twenty.
Exactly.
So to really do it, we're talking about over a million. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Right, right, right. No, I understand. I just wanted to clarify.
And the, the, the non-drop of confetti, but the raising of the sun through the clouds is not a million one hundred and fourteen thousand increase in our budget?
No.
Basically, we might not be looking at a million-dollar shortfall this year.
Oh, okay. I just wanted, so we're back at, in some ways, we're back right where we've always been since we've done this. We've got these competing priorities, significant priorities. Essentially, now we have numbers that answer the question, what would it cost to do the two things? But essentially, we don't have the money to do any of that anyway now. Right?
Um.
We could start?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that you couldn't do something.
Okay.
You know, things are better now. Property taxes are, you know, on the increase. We're going to see some increase this year. We're going to see some increase next year. So there are some things that I think the commission will be able to do. And for me, the question will be assigning priorities to these items, these things that, you know, almost like deferred maintenance on a house. I didn't have money to put the new roof on, you know, three years ago, and now I've been rehired and maybe I'll go put the roof on. But can you do everything? No. But you will have some options as you move forward in either the budget process or some other process that you choose to use to evaluate what can be done, what won't be done.
Also, just because my last math class was Algebra II, I kind of go in simple math. Does it work? Let's take the 300, 3,000. Let's assume that that's something that we need to do to get the staffing so that we're providing the service at an adequate level. So that means we've got 811,000, 811,000 roughly to open 10 hours. If I divide 811 by 10, do I have a rough idea of what it would cost per hour to open?
If you take 810 by 10, full-time employees, yeah.
I mean by 10 hours, not 10 full-time employees. I'm thinking in terms of hours. So in other words, suppose we didn't open 10 more hours, suppose we opened five more hours, is that 405,000 dollars?
Well, I think, you know, first, I mean, you're starting with an 811,000 number.
Right.
You got to break that down into an hourly component and then apply it to your 10-hour model. So, you know, you've got 811,000 here and we're saying it'll, it'll provide 21,372 hours. So if you divide that out, you get, you get an hourly rate and then multiply that times 10 or something like that.
Oh, boy, that's beginning to get to.
That's math.
That's math.
That's math.
And I have a calculator right here.
It seems to me that we have two, two competing possibilities here, and I think we all agree we can't do both. Can we do bits and pieces of either? And I remember several months ago, discussing about the need to get the staffing up in the library as our number one priority, that before we were to do anything, we would have to fully staff so that we can offer, as David pointed out, the kind of service that we want to offer to the public. So that seems to me, and I think the staff wants this and the commission wants this, if you gave a list of the number of important things, I think the public would say, well, that's nice, but we want our, we want our hours. Okay? And the commission and the staff are saying, well, the hours are nice, but we think the staff is important too. And can we get a little bit of both?
That was one of my questions is, we know that we originally went in onto the all branches being uniform hours with the idea that we would save on extra help and float people around, and that was the whole point of that. And that seems not to have worked well operationally. So let's assume that's not a good model for us at this moment. And I see on the specific ideas about changing hours, let's also work on, have a discussion on the assumption that we're going to maintain the 40 hours for now. So what is, do we know? Is it a significant cost increase to maintain 40 hours across the board but not have uniformity of branch hours? So some branches might be open on Monday and some branches might not, and I mean, doing the split scheduling, does that significantly increase our operational costs?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Because we've already, for the most part, abandoned that hierarchy that we had committed to a couple of years ago of regionally filling absences in a certain order.
Okay. Are we regionally filling absences at all?
Yes.
Or are we just using extra help?
No, we still are, but it's at a smaller level.
Also, just in terms of having a bit of history, the issue of closing at 8 o'clock. I think this came up, and I may be wrong, but there are people in the room who were there also, but we used to be open more than one night a week, correct? And during those nights, we were open till nine. And then we closed back, at the request of staff, we went back to eight because people were saying there weren't many people there till nine.
And that was before we cut hours?
This is one of my very favorite topics.
Is it?
Yes. This is the evening hours theory of David Dodd. And it has to do with families primarily, or working people, and the psychological barrier that faces you after dinner. And when you are deciding whether you have time or whether the library has time to accommodate you if you go there, if you have time to go there and if the library can accommodate. You say you finished dinner at 6:45 and you finish wrapping things up and you might get out the door at seven, but you know the library closes at eight, so by the time you get there, it's really 7:15 and really you're only going to have a half hour there. Right? So you say, whoa, you say, I'm going to race down the street.
Trying to get there before the library closes.
Get there really quick. Yeah, that was good. Very good. Like that. Sound effects. So it's a discouragement. It's a psychological barrier to go out the door, to go anywhere in the evening. I mean, it's kind of like trying to go to the movies if the only showing is at an inconvenient time. You know, maybe you could go, but you won't because it would be too much bother. So that, in my experience, the last hour that you're open of whatever day it is, is often slow. I mean, if it's an evening hour and you're, and you're open till nine, eight to nine will seem slow. So then you say, oh, well, no one's here between eight and nine, we're just going to close back to when people really stop using the library at eight because it's pretty busy between seven and eight. And then you close to eight and then voila, nobody comes in between seven and eight and you can keep pushing that back and you will. It's going around the block. It's pretty amazing. It's a new cruising pattern.
It's friends of yours, Tim.
Tim.
I just heard that the library's open.
Anyway, that's my little theory of evening hours and I think it's just psychology and I think all libraries should be open as late as they possibly can.
Well.
David, do we have any old statistics when we were?
Our data?
Open? On what the numbers were between six and seven, seven and eight, eight and nine?
We probably do. Do we? Yeah, but it's old, right? But I mean, I see what you're asking, could we show that?
Or.
What the numbers are.
Or we could pick a branch just as a, you know, possibility and say, okay, we're going to do a pilot in one branch. And we're going to stay open an extra hour, we're going to track how many people come and see if it makes a difference.
Yeah, and it's an over time thing. You know, the ramp up and the adjustment in people's understanding and there's so many variables. I mean, I just really think libraries should be open from nine till nine every day of the week and then it would be simple. You would always know that the library was open and that's the goal, right? Or even longer. So, but how would you, if you did that as a, I'm not trying to object off the bat, but you know, just, would you really get people? Yeah, yes, I am. I don't think that would work, Susan. Would you really get people to come in? You know, if you open Petaluma till nine o'clock, how long would it take the overall population of Petaluma to become aware of that and then to start having the confidence to come in? I mean, if people have lost confidence in evening hours?
Well, I think my memory may be flawed, but it felt to me that a part of our reason for that decision was because the staff was feeling like, man, I'd rather not work till nine if nobody's coming in. And it was, it was, it was to partly help the staff. It was, it was not because we felt we needed to close the hour, it was because they were saying, we're sitting here twiddling our thumbs, we'd rather be. We'd rather be home. Let's close." So, I mean, that's just one issue in this whole thing. I don't...
Oh. During the special branch managers' meeting and that topic came up, what was the general discussion about that? Did people say, "Yeah, we should stay"? I mean, was there, you know, an overwhelming number of people that said, "Yeah, we should stay open until 9:00"?
I'm remembering it as a suggestion from one person. And I think, I want to say it was the Petaluma branch manager. I don't think there was disagreement, but I also don't think there were others chiming in saying yes. So it was one idea of many that were talked about that day.
I just also want to, I love these ideas and I love the brainstorming you guys did. I think this is fabulous and really useful. And thank you very much for doing all of this. The one that concerned me, I don't think we can, under our current JPA, we don't have to have identical hours, but we have to have equity of service. For now, we still have that. So I think we can't necessarily look at leaving 101 branches open on the corridor, you know, longer than others. We can look at staggering schedules and having those be the prime hours. I mean, you can look at it a lot of different ways, but I think we do need to have equity of service still. As long as we still have it, that's...
I'm trying to think about what next. Where, oh, well, I'm trying to think of, we need to have public input. But I'm thinking about what next. And one of the thoughts that is in my mind is that we're back at the same place we were six months ago. And Mary Evelyn will bring us back to this on occasion, of we need to establish our priorities. And I appreciate Bruce putting the addendum here of the, "Oh, but don't forget, you've also got to deal with this." The positive thing that has come out of here, from my perspective, is we now know a number that perhaps for opening, for number one, providing adequate service for the 40 hours that we have, and what it would cost to open another eight, another eight hours, 10 hours. I think the reason it was 52 is because that's... No, I don't know. But anyway. Anyway, so we now know that. So now we have yet one more piece of information about what we could do with the money we don't have. And another inspiration for how to, for, you know, looking for a tax initiative or some way to increase our funding, which is the bottom line of all this. So I think we need, I mean, if, part of this meeting I would like as a direction is that sometime within the next couple of months, we actually establish those priorities. Now, there may be a new commission and they may have new priorities. But in essence, I think we need to start from that. And I would appreciate, Bruce, if we had some sort of indication of these numbers on the things that were, you know, capital and unfunded liabilities and those kinds of things are nice and big to think about. But are there interim steps, you know, steps we can take in the direction of meeting those needs also? But I think we really instead, we've all gone around and said what our individual priorities were. But as a commission, we haven't said, "These are our priorities with money because there's going to be some increase." Then I'd also like to look at these specific ideas. For example, open at noon on Tuesday to stay open till 6:00 on Saturday may also help another problem, which is that major rush for circulation on Tuesday morning. If they don't have to open till noon, then they've got some time to sort through the piles of books that have piled up over the weekend. So there may be some things in here that we can look at that don't cost specific money now that can address the issues. Am I speaking out of line here? Go ahead.
Can I make a suggestion, which is we have our budget hearings coming up in February and March. And it seems like last year, we tried, we had a discussion about setting our financial priorities and figuring out what we needed to do. And I think that's a discussion you have every year with your budget thing. So I think maybe at those budget workshops, we can have on the agenda time, a presentation about what incremental steps we might be able to adopt and talk about what our priorities are, et cetera. And I would suggest for this evening and maybe next commission meeting, as we work our way towards February, obviously, we're not going to start spending money right this minute. So that's just...
Well, but my issue, my issue, go ahead. I'll finish.
I was going to say is I would like to hear from the public and get input from the public and then bring it back here and talk about what direction we want to give staff for presenting us, what options we think might be interesting, what things we want to see, like what schedules might be looking like, et cetera. Because, I mean, these are all really interesting ideas. I would like to know which ones are practical from our management's point of view. And if so, what does that actually look like? And then put it on an agenda for the public to talk about it specifically.
I agree with you except for one thing. My history or my understanding of the budget process, which interestingly enough, may be different anyway. We won't go there right now. Is that in February, we are presented with a potential budget. And then we have February to March to think about it and give final changes in March and vote on it in April. But I think it would be useful for the people who are needing to construct that potential budget for us in February to have our input and priorities before they construct that budget in February. So it would seem to me that it would be something we would need to deal with in January.
Okay.
Now, you've kind of tantalized us with some information about the property tax. But is there a way that you can tell us? I mean, do you get the numbers in December? Is that correct or have they come out?
We have some estimates from the county tax folks, the Auditor Controller's Office. We got that Thursday, I think, afternoon or Friday. The first tax payment is, you know, toward the end of December. That, you know, is your best indicator of what's happening, you know, because that's, you know, that's the actual payment. But they've made estimates for the current year. The auditor controller, about a month and a half ago, maybe two months ago, you know, said some, made a prediction that, well, for next year, which would be almost two years from now, you could anticipate 2%, I think they were talking about 3.5% growth next, this year, and 2% for the next year. You know, that helps quite a bit in terms of the budget. We will have, unless something drastic happens, we will have some surpluses from results of the current year. And there are going to be surpluses for the year ending 2013. And you'll get all that information on the second. So like I said, it's, you know, it's a much, it's a much improved climate over a couple of years ago, or even maybe even last year, where, you know, there was always a lot of reservation and, "Well, I don't think we're out of it yet. We've just hit the bottom and we're coming up." That kind of talk. For the library, the exposure is 95% of your revenue is property tax. And I've always felt that once all of this distressed property got off the books of the banks, things could start to get more normal. And until then, you know, investors or people buying houses, nobody wanted to buy a house because they weren't quite sure that we were finished going down. Well, now I think people are starting to feel we're finished declining and you're going to see more activity and it's going to, you know, a little more positive. But the other complicating factor for the commission is when you look at your resources, you have some one-time money and then you have ongoing money. And you can't, well, I won't recommend that you use one-time money to solve ongoing problems.
That's been a principle.
We tend to agree with that.
So, I mean, there's just layers of complexity. And like I said, you know, getting into a budget discussion or priority setting would help.
I just have one more thing I'm...
Oh, that's okay.
And I happen, I'm not always very organized, but I happen to have the notes that I took at the meeting where we talked about our priorities. And to a person, the commission said that staffing, adequate staffing was...
I remember that very clearly.
That everybody mentioned was adequate staffing.
I'd like to go around, I want to open to the public momentarily, but I'd like to give each commissioner a chance to, you know, Keyan, if they have anything before we go to the public. Anything from there? No? Paul?
No, I just echo what Helena said, that I remember that very clearly, that full adequate staffing was on top of the order. Okay?
I think what makes the most sense in the immediate, short term is to focus on trying to work within the resources we have and the hours that we can afford and come up with a schedule that works better for the county than what we currently have.
I think I'm just stubborn. I don't like this number because it's too big. And the 811,000? So I'm just going to ask if there's any way that, there's another way to get us some additional hours at a lesser cost, i.e., using more non-benefited employees as opposed to all of these employees getting benefits? And it's not that I don't want to pay people benefits. It's just that I don't see us having a spare million dollars. And I think, you know, we'd all like to try to do something.
Spare million dollars ongoing.
And it feels kind of like an all or nothing. And I appreciate your view, David. But, you know, I'm thinking, okay, if we have to wait until we have an extra million dollars...
Per year.
Per year. Eight million.
That's, he's talking about the tax deduction.
Yeah. Right. So anyway, I would just like to know if there's any way that we can get some additional hours available to be open to the public with a different kind of staffing model, using more of the floating or help?
Okay. Let's open it to the public. Let's limit it to three minutes and see how that goes. And we don't, just let them speak. I mean, the hordes of people did not seem to appear. But anyone who would like to address these issues, please feel free.
Hi, everyone. I'm Barbara White and I live in Santa Rosa. And I'm a Tech III circulation person here at the Central Library. And I thank you for asking for and considering staff input and plans for change. I personally am very concerned about more changes to the library open hours and holidays and closures. I realize, let me back up a little bit first. We got an email saying that you were considering changing the holidays from Mondays, from Saturday and Sunday to Tuesday. And this is the last information that I had. So I was very concerned about that. So this is kind of a little bit more about that. I do realize that there will be upcoming changes to all kinds of things. And for the most part, I encourage change for the good of all. However, please keep in mind that library customers vary in their use of services. It takes a long time for even the smallest change to reach everyone. It has been two-plus years since major changes were made to the open hours. We still hear surprise from customers that we weren't open when they came by on Monday. On Saturdays, they expect us to be open until 6:00 and are unhappy when we inform them we close at 4:00. The change in holiday closures still confuses customers, even though they are printed on the schedule and clearly posted around the library well in advance. When a holiday falls on a Monday, most businesses who honor holidays close that Monday. For us to close on a Tuesday for a Monday holiday would further confuse the public and take away an important workday for them to conduct their business. Honestly, I think the two most important things that need to be changed, and since listening to this conversation and input from our financial person, I'm going to back up and say the most important thing that I think that you can do is increase the substitute budget to realistically cover vacation and sick time. The public service staff, and I've done this for 10 years, public service staff, to know that when they take a vacation, when we take a much-needed vacation or we need to take our sick time, that we are not leaving our coworkers overworked or understaffed in our absence. This is extremely important. We have people working public service desks who do not take vacation time because they do not want to leave their coworkers overworked and understaffed. This is a tragedy. A tragedy. And then number two, to reopen Mondays. And then the holiday issue will solve itself. And so I thank you for your time and I thank you for your consideration. And I'm really impressed with the conversations that you've had tonight. Please keep in mind that the public, it takes them a long, long time to get used to changes. And I totally agree with David. Because I worked, I worked a night for a good five years. I worked an evening shift in Windsor. And what you said is spot on. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Maurice Blaug. I'm a library user in Hillsburg and also a member of the library advisory board there. Boy, I'm pleased that your first priority is to get staffing level up to what it ought to be. And I hope that after that, when you consider any changes in library hours, that you won't go either everything or nothing, but that you will pick judicious increments, perhaps maybe just Saturday only or, you know, something of that order. Maybe one month, one Monday a month. Something that you can afford rather than going for, I mean, this is everything. And as Mr. May has pointed out, you're not going to get, I don't have any money for everything right now. But I hope you'll, you know, think about incremental increases in library hours. And thank you. Thank you for your work.
Kirsten Merrihue from Santa Rosa. And I also want to thank you for the work on these numbers. I appreciate that we're actually, something in front of us to look at. One question that I had is that there was an ongoing number previously quoted to people saying that it was 300 and something thousand that had been saved when the libraries were closed on Mondays. That number was repeated a number of times. And I don't remember exactly what the context was, but obviously, that is a different number from 800,000 plus. So I think that it would be helpful to have a comparison and an explanation of why there is a difference between those two. Also, I can totally understand where Mr. Dodd's coming from when he talks about having a quality library. Certainly, as a patron, I want a quality library in every aspect possible. But we also have to remember that taxpayers have a lot of competing interests. But we also have to remember that taxpayers have a lot of competing interests for our money. There are a lot of things that need to be done. There are roads that need to be fixed. There are ongoing pension requirements, not just for the library, but for the county, for cities. There are many different things. And so it is very possible that there will be additional initiatives on the ballot for taxes for other things. So you may be competing with those. So I would suggest that quality needs to be balanced somewhat. And I appreciate what Commissioner Gustafson said, because I think that we really do need to look at other possibilities for service, because perhaps there are times when we don't need full service. Maybe there could be one day a week where there would just be, you know, staff at the front desk that takes in books and, and checks them out if necessary, just that one day. The rest of the time would be full service, something like that. Maybe that would be another consideration. But I hope that there will be further discussion, and I'm sure that there will be on all of these things.
Thank you. Other public comment?
I, I just wanted to respond to something that was asked. The 380,000 that was cited initially, when we first reduced the library hours, was the amount we anticipated saving, not just by reducing hours, but by uniform, making the hours uniform so that staff could float between and cover each other that way. So the 380,000 was what was anticipated to be saved in extra help and overtime by reducing hours and putting us on that uniform schedule. What it did not take into consideration was how incredibly understaffed we already were. It just didn't look at it. So in terms of the amount of savings, that was the actual number. It wasn't a very realistic number. I mean, if we just added 380,000 back into the budget, we could, as you've seen today, come up to adequate staffing, but not add back in hours. So that, but that, I think, is where you're, what the number you're talking about, in my memory is, we were originally anticipating 380,000 in extra help savings out of a 600,000 extra help budget that year.
I'd also like to make one comment back to the issue of the Tuesday on Monday holidays. That, that's been one of, that, I'm the one who's been pushing that. And I need you to understand that it's not that I think it's a good idea. I don't know that it's a good idea at all. I just wanted to be sure that the staff had the option to speak about whether it was something they wanted, not that it's something I propose. So that, I just am trying to get to the place where we check with the staff before we make decisions. And so, and so that's where that was coming from, and I'd like to make that clear, so that it's not, that it's not, I'm not proposing it. I just want to know if people think it's a good idea. And clearly, people don't.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Greenberg from Sebastopol, on the campaign to restore library hours. I want to say, I know there are competing, you know, there are different competing interests. I have studied the Sonoma County budget sort of at length, the, this continual call for, for road service. I mean, the, the supposed, I mean, it's billions of dollars. It could take every cent we ever have. And I don't think that, you know, that a ballot initiative would really be seen as, as something which, which would, would be for extras. I feel it would be widely supported in the community. I think people, what I would, I think these numbers are terrific. My, my first response is, as I look at them, is that, is that it would be really exciting if we're going to do a ballot initiative to, to really focus on how we, we market, like what people get from this. And I would suggest perhaps we give people more than, than we started with, that it's bringing back to like a thriving library campaign, and that it not be defensive in a sense of, let's get back to where we started from, but possibly to add hours, add some evenings, possibly consider if the union, if the staff liked it, the addition of Sunday hours in some places, I don't know. But, but, you know, and possibly the prospect of, of doing some planning or development for a library in Roseland. Something that could capture the, excite the imagination in a sense that if we get this, it's not just, you know, playing catch-up, but it's, it's having a library system that we could be proud of. You know, maybe even call it the Proud Library Campaign, or I've thought of the Thriving Libraries Initiative, or. The idea that, that we, you know, do you support libraries or not, and if you do, you support this initiative, would be a good type of, of way to, to approach this and look at it. And I want, I think it's great that these numbers are here and that they've been looked at and been done. I know that there is a tendency for initiatives and for fundraising to speak of capital campaigns. In my experience, I've often felt that capital campaigns are, are the things that organizations sort of like to push, because there's a sense that, oh, if we build something, we're doing something, like rebuild or redo the roof. But in fact, operations and adding to operations and expanding capacity such as a library in Roseland, in my view, are the things that, that, that trigger people's imaginations and make them feel like, well, you know, we're going to do this one time, but at the end of the day, we're going to have a system that we could be proud of, that's thriving, where we could say, we here, you know, who are we in Sonoma County? We're a people, we're a community that cares about libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? All right. I would like to know how the commission would like to proceed. I think it's clear that we've given direction, that we, I've heard a couple of directions. One of them is the, the benefits lady and the other, you know, that, an alternative to the full benefit package. The other is that we would like to be able to discuss the overall look at priorities, probably in January. And the third thing is, I think we're pretty clear that we would love to do this, but we can't. Is that right? And then, go ahead.
Well, also, I think we would like to be able to discuss alternative, current alternative schedules for the 20 hours we have.
That's what I, that was my next thing. And so, I don't know, this bottom part of this page, a special branch managers meeting ideas, it would be nice to know how to proceed with those possibilities and whether they are possible, and what effects they might have, and if there is an alternative for getting some variation in the schedule now, that we've no longer locked, we don't need to be locked into same, same schedule for everybody. Do you understand, Mike? This list.
Yeah.
And I don't know when we can discuss that or where we can proceed, but some things could happen pretty quickly, I think.
Put it on the December calendar, or is that?
The December agenda is, is closed at this point. January.
Are you wanting us to explore each of these, or are you wanting to pick certain ones out for us to further research?
Okay, let's talk about the, these possible ideas now. The other thing I'm thinking, okay, never mind.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Can I?
You can.
I think I'd like you to concentrate on the ones that had the most interest by the branch managers, that is, that more than one person spoke to it.
I also think what we're looking for is for you folks to sort of screen and cull and come back to us with the recommendations of what you think would actually work, and maybe more than one recommendation, but it doesn't have to be every single one of these.
What we'd always, what we'd also need, and I don't know how, whether you can chop it up, we need a cost associated with any one of the segments of this.
If there is a cost. But I think since we've, we've already concluded that we're not saving the money we thought we were going to be saving by having a uniform schedule, I'm not sure un-uniforming our schedule is going to significantly raise our operating costs. I guess if it.
Dis-uniforming?
Un-uniforming?
Un-uniforming.
De-uniforming?
Sounds very military.
Liberating, liberating our schedule.
Also, again, back in that spirit of, you know, asking, when you come up with some things, it'd be interesting to know staff input also on, on these things too. I think I see someone there who's got some ideas already, but she'll, you know. Anything else from the commission? I appreciate that we now know a number. I appreciate the two numbers, so that as we establish priorities in the next year's budget, we know that it'll cost about $300,000 to bring staffing up to the level and provide adequate sub and release time and vacation time, and around $800,000 a year to increase 10 hours. Those are numbers that are real.
Right, and I, and I agree with what David said, that this gives us some base for this new commission to go forward and actually try to raise money to get an exemplary library or staff.
You to get, lay the groundwork.
Lay the groundwork.
Yeah, so I've always said, do you guys act as if you're the commission, because we don't know what will happen with the so-called new commission.
Always a possibility there won't be a new commission.
There's that possibility. Can I just say a couple of things? One would be to thank Bruce and Patrick so much for a ton of work that you two have done over a very short turnaround. And it's been really just so great to have someone who understands the finance, understands how personnel works, and can put your heads together and come up with something real. It's a real relief to me personally, and I'm sure for Jamie too, to have that kind of expertise on board. So thank you very, very much. And I had one other thing I wanted to say, but I've totally forgotten what it was, so I'll give it up.
Well, I'll just, I'll just second that. Thank you.
Yes, we all do. Okay. Any other comments? I think. It's much too early to adjourn. We are adjourned.